Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. Today is Monday, November 19th, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence for Jackie Dill Godwin, a staff member from Pitt's School, Road Elementary School, who passed away recently. Please join me. This evening, we'll start with a presentation of colors by Northwest Cabarrus High School and the National Anthem by the Cox Mill High School Women's Ensemble under the direction of Jennifer Cook. Please rise.
Color guard, halt, left, eight, freezing, colors.
Oh, say can you see by the taunt's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Order, colors. Post.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of the Northwest Cabarrus High School Air Force JROTC program. There are Cadet Second Lieutenant Sarah Wood, Cadet Staff Sergeant Willie Edmund III, Cadet Senior Airman Austin Drake, Cadet Airman First Class Brooklyn Cook, and Cadet Airman First Class Boyce Talent. In honoring America tonight with the singing of our National Anthem are members of the Cox Mill High School Women's Ensemble, including Asia Legg, Abby Brown, Gia Go Peretti, Megan Thornock, Ashley Crock, Makaya Redfern, Noeby Rabenwitz, April Farley. Jennifer Cook is the Director of Choral Activities at Cox Mill High School. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. I'd like to welcome Officer Keith Drake from Bethel Elementary School, School Resource Officer. Thank you for joining us tonight. And we'd like to welcome the Northwest Cabarrus Middle School Student Council. If you would please stand. Thank you for joining us.[277.83][277.83](APPLAUSE). They are learning more about civics and public life by joining us tonight. So I'll take a motion that we set the agenda for tonight.
Let's move. Second.
Dr. Kerr, and who's second, please? Mr. Harrison? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The most passed is six-zero. We'll start with recognition for the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, Dr. Louder, Mrs. Ronnie Boone, and Mr. Tim Vaughn.
Good evening. Excited to be here. Turn that on. Excited to be here tonight, filling in for Ms. Jones. We are happy to introduce our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for November, but before we do that, we want to say a quick word of thanks to Mr. Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. We are grateful for your partnership and your support. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for November is Amity Allman. Mrs. Allman, would you and your family and any members of your school's administrative team who are here tonight, please come forward. Amity Allman is a first grade teacher at Arbrow McAllister Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by one of her students who wrote, "My name is Jake and I'm in first grade. Mrs. Allman is my favorite teacher. She taught me how to read and I love to read. She also takes me on adventures. She took me on a trip to outer space and introduced me to our class pet Speedy, the hissing cockroach.[415.12][415.12](LAUGHTER). My mom doesn't want to meet Speedy."[418.53][418.53](LAUGHTER). Recently, Mrs. Allman went to a conference to learn more about making STEM fun. I was excited to hear all about the things she learned, but I missed her and was even more excited to have her back in my classroom. Mrs. Allman teaches me how to be kind and lets me share silly stories. I love everything about first grade because of my teacher. Mrs. Allman, congratulations on your selection as Teacher of the Month and thank you for all that you do to help your students learn to love school. Please allow Mr. Vaughn to present you with your award.
Congratulations. Next, we'll have the Impact Through Education Awards and Ms. Boone.
Tonight, we'll be presenting Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Patriot STEM Elementary School and C.C. Griffin Middle School. Our Impact Awards are sponsored thanks to the generosity of AXA Advisors, and I want to say thank you and welcome if they are here, and I'm not sure if they are here. Somebody's... Mr. Spardella?
Yes, ma'am.
Come on up. Leo Spardella is joining us tonight to help with the presentations. So we want to say thank you to AXA Advisors for sponsoring this program for us. We do appreciate it. So we'll start with Patriot STEM Elementary School. May I have any members of the Patriots Administrative Team to come forward at this time, please? And our first honoree from Patriots Elementary School is Andreas Andrews, and he was not able to be here this evening, but I would like to read his biography and let you hear a little bit about why he was selected for this award. Andreas is a fifth grader at Patriot STEM Elementary. He greets everyone with a smile and is a pleasure to be around. He is a great friend to others and encourages his peers to do their best. Andreas' teachers say that he has shown tremendous growth this year and is taking on more academic challenges. He loves math class and enjoys being outside with his friends. His teachers are so proud of how much he has grown and his willingness to work hard in all of his classes. Andreas loves all things Disney. He has probably been to Disney World more times than Mickey and Minnie combined.[609.29][609.29](LAUGHTER). Andreas enjoys playing with his best buddy, his dog Gus. He's a big country music fan and loves to sing. His teachers say he always has a song in his heart. Friday night movie nights with his family are one of his favorite events. He also loves playing video games. Andreas' teachers know that he will continue to be successful because of his amazing attitude and work ethic. Everyone who knows him knows that he will work hard and continue to persevere. We congratulate Andreas on his Impact Through Education Award for Patriot STEM Elementary School. And I'm going to present the award to his principal.[645.16][645.16](APPLAUSE). Our next honoree from Patriot STEM Elementary School is Ashley Botello. Would Ashley and her family please come forward?
Ashley has attended Patriots Elementary since kindergarten, and she is now a fifth grader at the school. She's a lovely young lady and has a heart as big as her smile. Ashley is a member of the school choir and Patriots as leaders or pals, as it's known. She also helps out with the children's mass at her church. Ashley is willing to help anytime she is called upon and volunteers very often. Outside of school, Ashley enjoys cheerleading, watching football games with her family, and building structures with Legos. Ashley's teachers say that she is a friend to everyone and encourages others around her. She's kind to all. Ashley always strives to do her best in whatever she attempts to do. She has an amazing personality and is a delight to have in class. Ashley has a servant's heart and loves to help out with younger students in school. She often volunteers with special needs students at Patriots and can be seen escorting students to their classes. This year, Ashley has been particularly helpful to the kindergarten students during dismissal. By the second day of school, she could name many of the kindergarten students and help them get organized for dismissal by reminding them how they go home. At an early age, Ashley had learned to persevere. School was not always easy for her. Before she started first grade, she became ill with a condition that caused her to be paralyzed. She spent many days in an intensive care unit and started first grade with a walker. But Ashley persevered, and in one year's time, she was 100% free of her condition. Her doctors were amazed at her rapid recovery. Patriot STEM Elementary is proud of Ashley and the impact she has on students and adults at the school.
Mom and dad and sister can go and shake hands.
Our next honoree from Patriot STEM Elementary is Ms. Mary Ellen Brafford. Would Ms. Brafford and her family please come forward?
Mary Ellen Brafford has been the technology facilitator at Patriot STEM Elementary for three years and has been employed by Cabarrus County Schools for 16 years. As technology facilitator, Mary Ellen works tirelessly to keep Patriots teachers up to date on the newest technology and spends many hours co-teaching in the classroom. In the past, she has served as the School Improvement Team Chair and remains an active member of the School Improvement Team today. She is also part of the school's teaching and learning team that works with county leadership and other staff members to bring about positive change in the school. Staff members say that Mary Ellen is always willing to help when they call on her. She has a wonderful attitude and is a role model for staff and students. Running the Technology Department at Patriots is a huge task and a big responsibility that she takes all in stride. You will never see her in a bad mood or find her unwilling to do what it takes to keep the school's technology up and running. Even when she is in the middle of something, she will gladly stop what she is doing to assist. Thank you, Mary Ellen, for making an impact through education at Patriot STEM Elementary
And our final honoree this evening from Patriot STEM Elementary School is Ms. Tracy Bartels. Would Ms. Bartels and her family please come forward?
Tracy Bartels has been a teacher assistant at Patriot STEM Elementary for five years. She works with third grade teachers and students and is an important member of the school. Tracy volunteers for many duties that are outside of her required job responsibilities. She often comes to work early to volunteer in the Media Center, helping to reshelf books. In addition to being on staff at Patriots, Tracy has been an active member of the Patriots PTO since 2010. She's spent countless hours organizing special events for parents and students and has made Patriots the place to work and learn. Staff members say that Tracy goes above and beyond her duties to help them when they are in need. She is a positive role model for staff and students. It is obvious that Tracy enjoys working with kids. When you see her interacting with students, she is always smiling and engaged in her work. When asked to do something at a moment's notice, Tracy is ready, willing, and able to do the job. Tracy speaks four languages and has a wonderful sense of humor. She is always making her coworkers laugh, but the characteristic that makes Tracy so special is her kind and gentle spirit.
Mr. Spardella, we've got one more group.[1109.01][1109.01](LAUGHTER). We'll now move on to our recognitions for Impact Through Education Awards at C.C. Griffin Middle School. Would the C.C. Griffin Middle School Administrative Team please come forward at this time? Our first honoree from C.C. Griffin this evening is Jaleel Bennett. Would Jaleel and his family please come forward? As soon as he enters a room, Jaleel Bennett brings a big friendly smile with him that lights up that room. Jaleel comes to school every day with a genuine, positive, can-do attitude that is infectious to those around him. He's a very focused student in class and always wants to make sure he understands the concepts. He works hard and is a great role model for other students. Jaleel is an excellent student athlete that embodies the characteristics of a well-rounded student. He is a leader among his peers and is always considerate of others and their perspectives. One of his classmates said, "Jaleel is always nice and kind to others, even when it's not necessarily the cool thing to do." Jaleel is an outstanding young man, and we are so proud of his friendly and supportive nature and the impact that he has on those around him. The halls of C.C. Griffin are a better place for having Jaleel Bennett as a mighty Griffin. Our next honoree from C.C. Griffin is Cora Long. Would Cora and her family please come forward?
Cora consistently puts forth her best effort on every challenge given and assists other students in embracing challenges. She participates in student council, Battle of the Books, Math Counts, and assists in tutoring sixth grade math students. Cora is a musician and brings her love of music to orchestra. Cora always has a smile on her face and is always willing to help others. One of her teachers said, "We did a PBL activity in class, and Cora and another student chose to work with the new student who only speaks French." Cora made sure she was involved in using Google Translate. She helped the student understand the PBL and had her participating. This is just one example that shows how Cora always has an impact on her education and that of others. Cora is a true gem, and her positive supportive attitude is contagious at C.C. Griffin, and the school is lucky to have her.
Our next honoree from C.C. Griffin Middle School is Ms. Megan Gomis. Would Ms. Gomis and her family please come forward?
Megan Gomis is an eighth grade English Language Arts teacher at C.C. Griffin Middle School. This year, she took on the huge challenge of leading the eighth grade ELA team and building it up from scratch. Beyond her instructional duties, Megan is a mentor to first-year teachers, serves on the Instructional Leadership Team, and the School Improvement Team. She also is the eighth grade cheerleading coach and is now a leader within her new grade level. Megan models high expectations for all students and provides additional support and love to any student who needs that extra care. One of her colleagues said, "Megan is the most influential educator that I've worked with in my career. She is someone who makes everyone around her better through her example and the support she's always willing to offer. She communicates in a way that makes all people feel valued. She models how to give 100% effort to our students every day and will give as much time as is needed to continue growing herself and her students. I feel truly lucky to work with her and learn from her." Congratulations, Megan, on your selection as an Impact Through Education Award winner.[1462.58][1462.58](APPLAUSE).
And our final honoree this evening from C.C. Griffin Middle School is Ms. Pam Delaney. Would Ms. Delaney and her family please come forward?
Jimmy Johnson, the former coach of the Dallas Cowboys, once said, "The difference between ordinary and extraordinary is that little extra." Pam Delaney is extraordinary in everything she does at C.C. Griffin. She is truly defined by this quote. As the head custodian at C.C. Griffin Middle School, she has trimmed shrubs, mopped or buffed floors, sprayed overhead walkways countless times, always keeping a positive attitude and with a smile. She leads through example and is looked upon by her peers as someone who is a model of the profession because of her dedication and attention to detail. For each event at the school, she meets with her team to discuss what needs to be done to ensure that C.C. Griffin maintains the highest quality and appearance. Pam Delaney is a great woman who exemplifies heart, dedication, and hard work. She truly loves C.C. Griffin Middle School and the work that she does.
Next, we'll have Jed Ida 593, the Innovative Practices Award. Deputy Superintendent. Goodbye. I'm going to go.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. It is my honor tonight to share with you the 2018 Innovative Practices Award. Would Ms. Amy Louder and anyone from her family please come to the front? The Innovative Practice Award recognizes a school psychologist who has engaged in a high level of innovative practice that has provided significant benefits to a group of teachers, schools, or a school system, as well as the children within that system. Amy, in conjunction with her team, has facilitated the development and implementation of a district-wide tiered framework for a comprehensive service delivery model to address safety and wellness for our 33,000 students and across 40 of all our schools. Through collaborative efforts, a district leadership team was created, which consists of discipline-specific supervisors for each of the following disciplines: school counseling, school psychology, school social work, and nursing and resource officers as needed. This district-level team provides direction to all administrators and CIS personnel across the county on topics such as safety, wellness, mental health and trauma, crisis prevention, response, and recovery. Each school in Cabarrus County now has a targeted student support team to assist with academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs. The benefits reach beyond just the students, though, as the CIS staff have been able to make huge breakthroughs with family outreach and community support. Amy, we would like to thank you and your team for the tireless work and dedication to create innovative practices to meet the academic, mental, social, and emotional needs of the students in Cabarrus County, and for sharing your work both at the local and state levels so that other districts have that same opportunity. Couple of Amy's peers wrote, "Amy's cross-disciplinary work has highlighted the importance of collaboration between staff members trained to address mental health difficulties within the school system and has also increased the frequency and quality of the partnerships resulting in better outcomes for students. Amy's intelligent, thoughtful, dedicated, and relationship-oriented collaborative approach has built unique and strong connections with stakeholders and leaders." After receiving the award in October, Amy wanted to emphasize that the success and implementation of this program are due to the collaborative teamwork of our DIRTT Team, yes, DIRTT, that stands for District Integrated Response Team, which consists of John Basilese, Amy Jewell, and Amy Louder, and to the numerous specialized instructional support personnel who carry out the everyday grind that is required to support this CIS model. It has taken the minds, energy, and attention of these individuals It has taken the minds, energy, and attention of these individuals to intentionally break down silos and build multidisciplinary collaborative partnerships that bridge departments and agencies. Amy is grateful for the DIRTT Team, for the constant trench work they do together, for her team of psychologists in the district who carry out the vision for comprehensive psychological service delivery, for all school counselors, social workers, nurses, and SROs and CCS who believe and engage in the work, and to the students and staff administrators, parents, and community members who have benefited from this model. Amy, we're extremely proud of the work you and your team have done. Congratulations on receiving the 2018 Innovative Practice Award.
Next, we'll welcome Dr. Crystal Hill for the Recognition of Schools Which Exceed Academic Growth.
Good evening. I am very excited to recognize schools that exceeded expected academic growth for the 2017-18 school year. The distribution across the state is roughly 25% of schools exceed expected growth, 50% meet expected growth, and 25% do not meet expected growth. I am pleased that in Cabarrus County schools, we outpaced the state distribution with over 87% of our schools meeting or exceeding growth last school year, which is up 22% from the previous school year. We attribute our academic achievement to multiple factors. We have dedicated faculty and staff led by a group of phenomenal principals. We have the best kiddos and very involved families who advocate for their children. We are blessed to have visionary leadership and a supportive school board and community. The CNI department has been focused on providing tools for our teachers to allow them to be more precise in the teaching and learning process. We have provided a guaranteed and viable curriculum that is grounded in the North Carolina Standard Courses Study and written by our very own master teachers right here in Cabarrus County. In our curriculum, we have outlined what students should know and be able to do, and we have linked vetted resources. Additionally, we have provided an interim benchmark assessment that serves as a GPS and tells our teachers exactly how students are performing on specific standards. Teachers then use this information to guide future instruction. Tonight, you will notice the diversity in the schools being recognized. We have schools from all over the county serving a variety of students in various communities. We believe that we can grow all of our students, and we are committed to what Dr. Louder has challenged us to raise the bar. At this time, we will begin our recognition. Each school being recognized tonight will be represented by the principal and members of the School Improvement Team. Each school was asked to share a summary. After reading each summary, we will allow the Board of Education to shake hands with the principal and members of the School Improvement Team. Our first school to be recognized is A.T. Allen Elementary School. This evening, we have Melanie Reisow, Laura Ruble, Holly Mabe, Emily McConsky, sorry, how do you say that?
Monosky.
Monosky, thank you. Joy McDowell and Janet Childress. The A.T. Allen teachers focus their efforts on strategic vocabulary work across all content areas and work tirelessly to make this a school-wide initiative to support all of our students. With our focus on strong teacher leadership and meaningful PLCs, we are proud of the responsive teaching we are able to provide our students to exceed growth. A.T. Allen has a long history of providing our young learners with a positive school climate that not only teaches them foundational academics but also meets their social and emotional needs. A.T. Allen will continue to strive towards academic excellence and student growth. Congratulations.
So, wait, wait. So, because there's several groups, as you receive your award, could you just like line kind of come this way and let me take a picture of the group at this distance? Right there, perfect, right there.
Can you?
I've got it. Thank you. So, and then just make that idea, everybody to me from over here.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Next, we have Beverly Hills Elementary School. This evening, we have Richie Wells, Michael Baden, Brittany Monroe, Margaret Perret, Tara Anthony, Cory Cobble, Erin Wilkerson, Shelley Johnson, Miranda Gruman, David Burpo, and Brenda Rackoff. What a difference one year makes. In 2016-17, Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School had the lowest growth indexed among all elementary schools in Cabarrus County schools. However, with hard work, determination, and an explicit focus on our response to student performance on Common Formative Assessments and District Benchmark Assessments, Beverly Hills is proud to have had the third-highest growth index among Cabarrus County schools' elementary schools in 2017-18, as well as the second-largest increase in year-to-growth indices among all Cabarrus County schools. With positive momentum and a continued focus on individual student needs, Beverly Hills is working to make exceeding expected growth the norm. Congratulations. 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 Great job, congratulations. Next, we have Mount Pleasant Elementary School. And tonight, we have with us Amy Wagner, Stacy Park, Krista Saxman, Nicole Harwood, Deborah Burris, and Cory Cochran. Mount Pleasant Elementary is proud to exceed expected growth for the sixth year in a row. All of the members of our School Improvement Team, especially our sit-chair and committee-chairs, work hard to guide our school to make us the successful school we are. When quality educators are allowed to take a meaningful role in curriculum and how a school is run, then great things can happen. Congratulations. Great job, Cory. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Good job.
Great job, congratulations. Next, we have R. Brown McAllister Elementary School. And tonight, we have with us Janice Bond, Melissa Brantley, Tara Butch, Carrie Kern, Carmen Money, Katie Farum, Beth Pike, Krina Presley, Becky Rice, Jill Trot, and Michelle Webb. The staff at R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School is committed and dedicated to the learning and success of all of our students. We are extremely proud of all of the hard work by both staff and students during the 2017-18 school year. We feel fortunate, blessed, and honored to be able to serve part of the downtown Concord community and our magnet families. Congratulations.
Be a blinkery. Permanent smile here we go. Nice and slow. Big smile on the end, and got it.
Congratulations. 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 Great job, Beth. Congratulations. Next, we have Rocky River Elementary School. This evening, we have with us Adrian Perry, Tori Brasher, Sendal Brenneman, Amanda Davis, Shayla Johnson, Lindsay Walters, and Camilla Heron. Rocky River Elementary School exceeded academic growth in the 2017-18 school year. Their staff and families have been dedicated to meeting the individual needs of all students through sensory integration practices and whole-school improvement through a multi-tiered system of support framework. Rocky River is no longer designated as a low-performing school because of hard work and commitment to the students and families. Congratulations. Sorry. Wait a minute, Adrian, sorry. Next, we have W.R. Odell Elementary School. And this evening, we have with us Jessica Reed, Leanne Russey, Stacy Cook, Tiffany Meadows, Casey Harrell, Michelle Castle, Danielle Baker, and Sandy Ward. Through hard work, collaboration, and creativity, W.R. Odell will inspire fearless, independent leaders who will become globally competitive. Two years ago, Odell Elementary created this vision statement of hopes of producing the kind of learner and citizens that our society needs. For 89 years, high academic achievement and strong community values have been the tradition at Odell. We will continue to uphold these values as we help our students to grow to their fullest potential. This is our second year of exceeding growth at Odell, and we're aiming to make it a three-peat. Go Dragons! Next, we have Weddington Hills Elementary School. And attending this evening, we have Chastity Dolan, Amy Peters, Amy Smith, Amy Chun, Lenora Barron, and Jenny Ratliff. Weddington Hills Elementary is an IB World School, offering the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program. The mission of the school and IB is to develop the attitudes of the IB learner profile in our students. These attributes define an internationally-minded person who can be successful anywhere in the world. Opportunities to develop these attributes are provided through the school day throughout the school building. Students are recognized for showing these attributes and reflect on their progress in becoming more internationally-minded. The IB PYP builds a foundation in learning through inquiry, additional language, culture, and taking action through service to others. The school community works collaboratively to meet the needs of the whole child and provide a loving environment where all learners grow, both in academic growth and in social and emotional growth. Weddington Hills boasts a legacy of growing students. They are the only Title I school in our district that has consistently met or exceeded growth for the past seven years. It is truly a school where all are loved and all love learning. Congratulations. Congratulations. Next, we have C.C. Griffin Middle School. This evening, we have Sue Nash, Ashley Short, Jason, Ira Dolt. I had it right. Jason, I. Micah Thompson, Brian Berlin, Jessica Fleeger, Kristen Seibick, Megan Gomez, Pam Delaney, and Mary Odom. Last year, C.C. Griffin Middle School teachers were challenged to make changes so they would no longer be a low-performing school. Staff accepted this challenge, and not only did we exceed growth as a school, we had the highest math growth score in all of Cabarrus County middle schools and second in overall school growth. We are very proud of our teachers and students for their hard work, and best of all, we were able to drop the low-performing schools label. We will continue to strive to exceed growth this year and improve our proficiency. We are proud to be CCG. Congratulations. 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 Next, we have Winkler Middle School. This evening, we have with us Michael Williams, Rebecca Phillips, and Michael Peterson. We are very proud of our students and teachers' hard work to exceed expected growth. We believe our results are the product of great core instruction, strong student supports, and dedicated students and teachers. We are excited about continuing our work this year. Congratulations. And joining us tonight, we have Stephen Bookheart, Chris Balga, and Kim Lane. Harris Road Middle School would like to recognize its teachers, students, staff, and parents for once again exceeding expected growth. This is the 12th time in the last 12 years Harris Road has been recognized for exceeding expected growth. Harris Road's Growth Index Score ranked within the top 5% of all schools in the state. Harris Road's teachers are committed to providing its students with quality 21st-century education while teaching its students to compete globally. Congratulations.
Congratulations Stephen. Great job. Congratulations.
Joining us tonight, we have Chase Tenel, Scott Kodesloff, Sarah Dalton, Lindsey Crudell, Laura War, Rick Money, and Liz Snyder. We are extremely proud of the work our students and teachers are doing at Hickory Ridge Middle School. Through their hard work, Hickory Ridge Middle School has exceeded growth for five consecutive years. Our teachers are intentional in creating instruction that is data-driven and is focused on the needs of individual students. Our staff has been diligent in creating a culture that is both inviting and engaging for our students in and out of the classroom. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Great job. Great job. Great job.
Next, we have Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. And this is really special because we have students in the audience tonight from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. So we have Anna Blessington, Maria Murray, Kurt Lawrence, Marjorie Hart, Kelly Baumgartner, Pepper Martin, Paul Rumner, Chris Barkhoff. Northwest Cabarrus Middle School is truly a Titan family. Our teachers and staff work every day to support each student's academic, behavioral, and social-emotional well-being and growth. Northwest teachers work hard to hold high expectations of themselves and their students with a focus on STEM learning. Northwest Cabarrus Middle School is all-in to STEM, and our Titan family thanks all of you for this recognition. Congratulations.
Great job. Great job. Great job.
And this evening, we have with us Chris Myers, Delon Peebles, Mandy Browning, Jeff Walter, Courtney Willis, Lacey Jacobs, Andrea Rassler, Dana Hardeman, and Jacqueline Ferrera. Northwest Cabarrus High School believes that a positive school culture for both staff and students is the key to student achievement. Our school improvement team works diligently to make Northwest Cabarrus a great place to work and learn where all students achieve academic success. Our teachers strongly believe that all students have the potential to demonstrate academic growth each year, and it is their job as educators to facilitate such growth. It is the widespread belief in our students that enhances and encourages Northwest Cabarrus High School students' love of learning. As a school, we are honored to be recognized for exceeding growth for the 2017-18 school year, and we take great pride in the expectation the tradition of academic excellence will continue moving forward. Congratulations.
Way to go. Great job. Great job.
And this evening, we have with us Kevin Blackburn, Brian Elliott, Amy Hicks, Andrew Platek, Dustin Shu, Megan Smith, and Colin Springer, and Lori Triever. During the 17-18 school year, Central Cabarrus High School refocused our collaborative planning processes on tightly aligning instructional plans with district curriculum maps and state standards. As a result, our teachers worked diligently in professional learning communities to unpack standards, create aligned assessments and instructional plans, review student data to check for mastery, and plan for student interventions. We are incredibly proud of the results, as Central Cabarrus High School exceeded expected growth with the fourth-highest year-to-growth increase in Cabarrus County schools. Congratulations.
Great job.
This concludes our recognition for this evening. We would like to thank our schools for their hard work and focus on continued improvement and for always remembering that behind every number is a child.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. I think the board is well enthused and excited for all the success. Next, we have agenda item 5.05 regarding Governor Cooper's proclamation that is November is Career Development Month. And Mr. Parker, antine?
I've made my bunch very nervous that they have to come in and be recognized this evening, so I'm probably gonna get paid back for this one. But actually, I was gonna explain very quickly what November is and what February is. A lot of you know that I present in February, because February is usually CTE month. And the National Association of Career and Technical Education, they designate February as CTE month. But Governor Cooper actually wanted to designate November as the month that we recognize professionals in the career development field. So we have an amazing team in Cabarrus County Schools that work with students every day to help them find their career direction. So this evening, I wanted to recognize that team. And the first one is actually Brian Elliott. Brian, you wanna come in? Brian is the CTE Coordinator for Central Cabarrus High School. He was just here a few minutes ago. But I want to also talk just a second about Brian. He is the Southwest Region CDC of the Year. And he, so right now, we have an excellent CDC at Central Cabarrus High School, so congratulations. And anybody that is here from Central Cabarrus, I don't know if the principal team is here.
Mr. Sheezie?
They were here. I want to give Brian this certificate, and it says, "Awarded to Brian Elliott for dedicated service to North Carolina career and technical education students in support of their career development and observance of Career Development Month during November 2018." Here you go. Thank you, sir. You wanna shake hands and walk around?
Looks like you're great among the talking too. Congratulations. Got a great team.
Crystal. You're getting good at making me laugh. Crystal Dellinger, come on in the room. They are gonna get me back for embarrassing them, and she's the one that said this, so. Crystal Dellinger is our CTE Coordinator at Cox Mill High School, and for those who don't know, she does an amazing job. A lot of you know that we have academies at all of our schools, and Crystal was on the design team that helped put together the academy at Cox Mill, and she's helped a lot at Central Cabarrus. And so she has a lot of experience in career and technical education and all the programs that we run. So I'm very proud of the work that you do. I'll tell you that personally, being the director. I appreciate what you do. And I also want to give you this award. It says, "Award to Crystal Dellinger for dedicated service to North Carolina CTE students in support of Career Development Month." Congratulations. If there's anyone here from Cox Mill, please come forward. Or Harris Road. Thank you very much.
Sorry, you forgot to mention this.
There you go, sir. Crystal's position is she's a feeder pattern position, so she works for Harris Road and Cox Mill. So thank you, Mr. Bookheart, for being here.
Gotcha.
I think I'm gonna be buying Starbucks gift cards for them too. I could see that coming, so. The next CDC that we have is Kendra Glover. Kendra?
Hello. I love I get to introduce y'all coming in the door like a pageant or something here. Kendra Glover is our CTE Coordinator at JM Robinson High School. And I want to talk about Kendra. I know I said Brian is actually this year's CDC of the Year for Southwest Region. Kendra was the CDC of the Year for Southwest Region in 2016-17, so we are very fortunate we had another winner and the CDC of the Year. But also to talk about Kendra, she is also was the lead for the academy at JM Robinson when it started, so she's done all that work to help put that together, and she's been instrumental in all the programs that we have at JM Robinson. She's tremendous at CTE. She also works with Winkler Middle School. She also works with J. M. Freeze, so she's got a plate full. So I appreciate very much what you do, so thank you very much. If anyone from Winkler's here, I think Michael's here. Thank you very much. I'll give you this. This is her certificate. Congratulations.
Hey Jackie. I gotta buy another Starbucks gift card for her too, so I put her on the spot. I'll talk about Jackie for a second. Again, we have a Health Sciences Academy at Northwest Cabarrus, and Jackie was also on that design team to help get that off the ground. She's a fabulous CDC, and a lot of times I have questions and want to do, and I can go to her and ask, because she's got a lot of experience in what she does. So I'm very thankful for the work that you do, and I'm very proud of what you do, so congratulations. Is anybody from, I know Chris is here, and we got, and also Anna. Jackie works with Northwest Cabarrus High and Middle, so she's got two here tonight. I'll give you that. Congratulations. We had a few people on my team that could not be here this evening for either sports events or some, I think Liz Poole actually had a meeting going on this evening, she couldn't be here. But Liz Poole is our CTE Coordinator at Mount Pleasant High School, and also Courtney Cubitt is our CTE Coordinator at Concord High School. And then Chris Camerano is our CTE Coordinator at Hickory Ridge High School. They could not be here this evening, but they do a fine job as well. This year, we changed our academy coordinator positions to be focused on work-based learning. I think I've already mentioned that to you at the prior meeting. We wanted to take work-based learning as a major focus, and so we actually have four positions that are dedicated to that task along with working with the academies. And to recognize them, they're also licensed as CDC, so CDC Month. Kristy Parlier is from JM Robinson and Mount Pleasant High School, both. She has both schools. Kristy comes to us from Mallard Creek. She was over there, and we kinda stole her away from CMS, and I'm thrilled, because she has such an amazing talent and working specifically with engineering academies, which is Mount Pleasant's Engineering Academy and also JM Robinson Engineering Academy. So she does a fantastic job. I'm not sure if Mr. Hobbs or somebody from J. Rob is here. I think we also had Todd Smith from Mount Pleasant here this evening. Kristy, we have a certificate for you, same thing. Kristy Parlier for dedicated service to North Carolina CTE students in support of their career development. Thank you very much. Congratulations. We have two work-based learning coordinators that could not be here this evening. Holly Harris, who is under the weather, I found out earlier today, and also Rob Machado, who is at a ballgame. But I also want to recognize Peter Kim. Peter, come on in here. Peter actually came to CTE from the Science Department. We drafted him, and I think he's now enjoying it tremendously. So now he's licensed as a CDC, and he works with two schools specifically, Northwest Cabarrus, their Academy of Health Sciences, and also the Public Safety Academy at Concord. And he's doing an outstanding job, and I'm really proud of what you do, so thank you for it very much. We actually have some people here, I believe, from Concord, and from Northwest. I saw Chris. You wanna come back? Hey Anna. You got two principals here, buddy. You're special.
You're that good.
There you go, sir. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you very much for allowing us to recognize them at the board meeting tonight. And if you see me at Starbucks, I'm buying gift cards for all this bunch, too. Thank you very much.
And next, I'd like to recognize one of our own board members, Mr. Barry Schumaker. Earlier, or actually, not earlier this week, last week it was, the North Carolina School Board Annual Convention in Greensboro. You may recall, a few months ago, we as a board approved the nomination of Mr. Schumaker for the North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors, and happy to say that he was unanimously elected last week. So this is the first time in my 20 years' knowledge of the School Board Association that we've had a member on the board. For better or worse, we are in the same state district region as Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, and with a limited number of seats on that Board of Directors, it tends to always go to CMS. So we're glad we weaseled in. So, and it was certainly Mr. Schumaker's qualifications that I think took it over the top this year. So congratulations, Barry. Any comments, sir?
The only comment I have is, as I get information, I will share it with all of you, and I know that we want to work with Chris's, Chris's group, the Superintendent's Association. I know that there's a push for all of us to kinda get on the same page so that we can be united on our, as a one front to the legislature about educational needs in North Carolina, and I think that that's part of what Chris and I have talked about, how we can, at least between the two of us, work with both of our own boards to try to carry it farther. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Well done.
And thank you all for the nomination.
Okay, board members, we're down to the approval of minutes. We have the minutes for the October 1st and October 8th meetings. Are there any comments regarding those minutes? I'll take a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Who would accept?
Dr. Kirk made the motion. Mr. Walter made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes six-zero. And now we'll go down to the reports section, and we'll ask Mr. Schumaker to review the updates to the draft scope of work.
As you remember, in the last meeting, your feedback was given to me about how to make changes to this document to make it a little bit more effective, and so I have made those I thought I had taken optional out of this, the top of the document, but I must have forgot those two items there on the summary. But those will be, that optional will be removed from the schedule, selection schedule, and the summary proposal and summary evaluation. That optional will be removed. I thought I had done that. I did it from the, I had put it in the exhibits as well, so I failed to remove the optional out. Those will be required sections. We did make some changes, and any changes that I made, I put those in red. I did add November 29th, so I added a date in there, so we'll place an advertisement in, on November 29th in the Tribune to advertise the feasibility study.
Did you mean that to be on a Sunday?
Is that a Sunday? I thought that was a Thursday.
No, that's a Thursday, but I don't think they publish on Thursday, do they?
The best circulation's on Sunday.
Oh, well, I was gonna get with them on that date.
Okay.
So I will, I will make sure that we coordinate with them. Mindy and I will make the phone calls, won't we, Mindy? So we'll get that correct. But then, there was a change that we asked for, to the facility with at least one of two possible scenarios. So I added "at least." And if you go down further, there really weren't any other requests for changes until you get down to the next, next-to-last paragraph in the first portion and break out estimates for potential demolition costs. Soil testing was added, and then we scratched athletic facility equipment, furniture fixtures, and all of that, and we just said the estimate cost in 2018 dollars, so we didn't change that, but we did do that. And then we changed, and I forgot to highlight this, not included in the cost would be the cost of furniture fixtures and electronics. It was spelled out a little bit differently, but that's the way we put it in there, F-F-N-E, so that will not be included in what they estimate. Right now, we have the firms submitting their proposals, care of me, but they'll be coming here to Cabarrus County Schools, and Mindy will help me in wrangling the proposals together until we get further down the road, and we'll name a committee once we get the next, next board in place. Also, you have in here the qualifications, Exhibit A, and then just the whole approach to it as far as the summary proposal content. And then the summary evaluation is the way we're going to judge this, based on a project approach. Then the professional qualifications, none of that changed. And then Exhibit A, and then all the other exhibits. What I will be providing to the, to the firms in the, Exhibit B is the prior related experience form. Exhibit C is the minority women business enterprise form. D is the AIA document, and Brian, I'll be looking to you to provide me that document, which is just a standard template. And then Exhibit E will be all of the Beverly Hills drawings and information that I got from our facilities group to, that represent the property. So located at Beverly Hills over there on 87 Palisade Drive. So that's, that's the scope of work, and these folks will be providing us proposals. And we should be going through those proposals. I was trying to find the dates. Yeah, there they are. So if you look in selection schedule, optional, I forgot to remove that, but that'll be removed. The official responses will be due 2:00 p.m. on December the 13th. And then we will, on December the 20th, if we need to, we will shortlist the firms, so that gives us about a week to go through the proposals and decide what we want to do, whether we want to pick a firm from the, what we have, or whether we want to shortlist them. And then the week of January 7th, we will start the process of dealing with the shortlisted firms if we have some. And then the recommendation we made at the board meeting on January the 21st. So after that, we hope to get the professional first services started on February the 4th, and with the study completed on March the 25th, and a presentation to the board by April the 1st. So that's the timeline that we are now under for this particular study.
And then based on the feedback and information we get from the study, we would then determine where it might fit into the capital plan.
Yes.
Based on other needs and funding the...
So as we all know, that we'll have a retreat, and we'll get a capital plan, the initial version of it, in January, I think January 25th, but the board will just see it for the first time. We will add this to the capital plan before we finalize it completely. So...
Board members, any questions, discussion? Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I reread it this afternoon. One thing that popped in my head, are we encouraging these firms to visit the site or do some due diligence that way? And if they wanted to, what is the process for them to do that? Either before or after this election? I mean, you don't want just be a bunch of people showing up to the school.
Well, if...
Or do you want, do they contact you for...
Yes. If they want to, if they want to go to the site, they'll contact me if they care to go. I will be providing them all the aerials and everything that, that facilities had for it, so they will have that information. But I'll leave it up to them as to what they decide, they, how they want to approach this.
Right, but I think there should be maybe something, something in here that just addresses that issue, to contact you if site visits is desired or whatever.
Okay. I will, I will put that over at, let me see, where do I want to put that? I'll just put in here under the contact that if desired to get a site visit, so I'll put that under the contact piece, and I'll put it right there. Other comments?
Anything else, board members? Okay. Do we have agreement to proceed? This, at this point, is not awarding anything, so it's just a, it's a scope of work, so we don't need to vote on it? Okay? Okay, so we'll let Mr. Schumaker proceed with his schedule?
Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Schumaker.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have comments from myself and Dr. Lauder. Just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving to the staff, to my fellow board members. Want to take a moment and just thank Mr. Powell and Dr. Kirk for their service. We will formally recognize them at the December 3rd meeting at the work session, the first meeting in December. And I'd also like to welcome Ms. Laura Blackwell, who will be joining us in December, and I don't know if Mrs. Grimsley is here. So, but we'll have the two new board members seated with us starting next month. So, and that's all I have, sir.
All right, I also just want to echo what Chairwoman Furtinbaugh said, and say I want to thank Dr. Kirk and Mr. Powell for their service to the school board. We appreciate everything they've done for the students, and the students of Cabarrus County and the people of Cabarrus County, so thank you for your service. Also want to congratulate Ms. Carpenter on her reelection to the board, and our newest board members, Ms. Grimsley and Ms. Blackwell. We certainly welcome you to the board and look forward to working with you, and as Ms. Furtinbaugh said, they'll all be sworn in at next month's board meeting. Earlier this month, I completed community feedback sessions to use as input for our new strategic plan. We held five sessions, and we're able to hear from parents and community members about what's important to them. Thank you to everyone who attended and participated, and to our schools that hosted these events. Special thanks to St. James Catholic Church for allowing us to host one of our sessions there. Feedback from the community sessions is being captured, and we will share these comments on our district website soon. We will continue, I'm continuing to meet with all of our schools and all of our departments and hope to finish that up before Christmas, and we'll have all that data to share with the board as we move into the strategic planning process. Want to say congratulations to Kate Colberth, who is one of the two regional finalists for Teacher of the Year. We look forward to her being the regional Teacher of the Year and winning the North Carolina Teacher of the Year, so congratulations, Kate. Great job. You certainly represent us well, and we appreciate that. A few reminders, applications for program choice will be accepted until noon on December 18th. Visit the district website and select the Program Choice icon on the right side of the page to access the application and learn more about all the options that are available. The deadline to submit a design for the 8th Annual Holiday E-Card Contest is 5:00 p.m. on December 7th. Contest information and details are available on the district website. And I want to close by wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We hope you have fun, have a nice time with your family, and be safe.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Point of privilege, we'd be remiss if we didn't congratulate Dr. Lauder on being nominated for Superintendent of the Year with the North Carolina School Board Association, which is no small feat, and personally, I'm grateful for your leadership and your stature among the other superintendents around the state.
And it was a, I was not able to attend the conference last week, but that was where a lot of the recognitions happened, so there's a special reception for all the superintendent nominees. Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll now go to our guest speaker section. In accordance with Board Policy 2310, and this is all in the printed agenda, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to present comments. Sign-up will be available 30 minutes before the meeting begins. Speakers must sign up with a board clerk no later than the normal start time of the regular scheduled monthly business meeting. So I do have two cards, and one, we invited to speak, Ms. Wilma Means, will come talk to us about Salvation Army volunteer opportunities. And Mindy, can you set hers to five? Thank you.
My name is Wilma King Means, and I am a board member of Salvation Army. And with me today is Colton Matthews. We're here to represent the Salvation Army. It was established in London in 1865 in one of the oldest, largest providers of social services. Each year in the United States, your donations enable the Salvation Army to serve nearly 30 million people in need. In Cabarrus County, we have served 10,000 persons, 37,000 meals, 8,000 in lodging, 4,000 in grocery orders, and 21,000 in toys and gifts. The Salvation Army offers many community service opportunities for local schools. Our current activity is Christmas kettle bell ringing, and he has some information he's gonna share with you. We are hoping that the information that we share with you tonight, we encourage you to make schools aware of this opportunity, because the funds raised help with these services. Adult program services, older adult services, emergency assistance services, housing residential services, disaster services, youth services. And the students in Cabarrus and Stanley County and their families benefit greatly for the, from this.
Yeah, I don't think it would be fair to ask for assistance without explaining exactly what it is, the time and effort goes to. I'm sure you've seen the kettles out various places, and as, after Thanksgiving, you'll see more out, but what's happening there is they're raising funds that'll stay in this local area. Each Salvation Army church, which I'm an assistant pastor at, serves the county they're in, and we are serving Cabarrus and Stanley Counties. And in any effort, any volunteers to ring at these bells, bring at these kettle stands, will bring in income to serve. As you said, we, we have a soup kitchen we serve daily. We have the only year-round homeless shelter. We also do social service outreach, and we just opened up a satellite office in Albemarle. So what I am having in my hand right now is just a volunteer sheet, if, just gonna pass this around to the board members if, if it's all right with you, for anyone or any group, maybe it could go out to the schools as well, for students to help give back to the community in a way that just is civil-minded and service-minded, and I think it would be a good idea, so that's what I have.
Okay, prior to my serving and getting on the board, many high schools, ROTC, Beta Clubs, and different groups, the band, participated. We don't have nearly as many schools now participating, and we hope that this effort would introduce and reintroduce to the community this opportunity, and we write very good community service letters of recommendation for students going to college. So I've done a lot and helped, and it's helped immensely with my 4-H and other groups, so I know some of these students might could benefit from this. Thank you.
What am I?
Give it to Ms...
If you, say you can give it to Ms. Rymer there, and she'll get it to us.
And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And next, we'll have Paula, is it Yost or Yous?
Yes.
Okay. Just based on the subject that you have on your form here, I want to remind you that part of this is that generally personnel confidential and specific school-level matters will be handled with the board's grievance policy and the appeal rights afforded under the North Carolina general statutes and are not the proper subject of public comment. So just caution you to be careful.
Sure.
With whatever your comments will be.
No problem. Thank you. Do I need to press the button, or?
It's on.
Okay, great.
It's on.
Thank you. My name is Paula Yost. I've distributed some of my cards to Ms. Abbott in the event any of you would like to contact me tomorrow. I'm here to talk to you guys. I, I wear a number of hats in the county, but the most important one is that I'm a mom, and I'm appearing tonight on behalf of my family. I think you guys need to look into some issues that your EC department is having and potentially... I'm here to talk to you guys, I, I wear a number of hats in the county, but the most important one is that I'm a mom, and I'm appearing tonight on behalf of my family. I think you guys need to look into some issues that your EC department is having and potentially review and audit. I'm not sure what type of policy or profile you have to go through in order to do something like that, but there are numerous cases in the county involving special needs children. One of them is my own child. Basically, what happens when you're a special needs parent is the EC department gives you a conflicting answer depending upon who you speak to. There are about five or six different people you can ask, and depending on who you ask, you will get a completely different answer. In my particular circumstance, my little boy is four, and he was born with a complete bilateral cleft lip and palate. He's had to have four surgeries in four years. The last one was to take bone from his hips and put them in his mouth so that his teeth would grow the way that they should. I got handed off to Cabarrus County Schools through the CDSA, and I had a beautiful experience with the CDSA. They helped me with everything I needed to get my son the proper speech therapy that was required for a child who was born without a roof in his mouth. Unfortunately, I made the naive experience of believing I would get the same treatment with Cabarrus County Schools, and I got the exact opposite after I met the EC department. And I'm sorry to tell you that, but I think someone needs to be honest with you and let you know that that is the case and the experience that I have had. At this point, I have a child with a high IQ but articulation skills, which are probably well beneath where they need to be. He's currently testing at 4%. I have spent, since, since August of this year, August of 2018, I've spent exactly 32 hours, and I have a job where I bill time, so I could send you an itemized report of every hour that I've spent working on my son's matter, who I've spoken to, what the outcome of it has been. That's on a spreadsheet that I would be happy to send you. I've consulted with outside experts, I even had to get DPI involved. Special needs parents do not have time for this. We're too busy fighting with our insurance companies and doing the general parenting needs, much less the needs that are heightened by having a special needs child. I shouldn't have to fight like this to get my child the free public education that he is constitutionally entitled to receive, and neither should any other special needs parent in this community. So I call upon you to audit this department and to make them do their jobs. They're making up policies as they go, they are gaslighting parents, and this is harming children. I have no idea what kind of motivations anyone would have for this, but I am certain that it is not in the best interests of our children. Please feel free to call me, and I welcome any of you to review my son's IEP and his case file. Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Okay, thank you, Dr. Krebs. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. And in there, we have the budget amendments, and I believe that's all we have at this time. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Harrison made the motion, Mr. Schumaker made the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we'll have the action agenda, the 457 Plan, and Ms. Klutz? Board members, do you have any questions about beginning to offer this as a opportunity for our staff? Does it benefit?
Just clarify, this is in addition to what we already have? We already have a 457 Plan?
Yes, we have a, other 457 options, this is the one that the state sponsors.
Good, thank you.
Okay, no discussion, take a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Mr. Harrison, I go with Mr. Walter. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes 6-0. Thank you, that was easy. One thing. Item 10.02, the approval of policy 1730-4022, 7231. And Mindy, doesn't look like they... Oh, maybe it attached here under a different format. Board docs is very slow tonight. No, that's not it. Yeah. It's not responding right away. Yeah, I still can't get it pulled up here. I'll have to work ahead on these. Any questions or comments about this first policy? Okay, so the big change was number nine in the list? Okay, take a motion to approve? Or you have a comment? Sir?
Ms. Reimer, can you describe number nine to us in any more detail, or any more?
I'm going to send this to our attorney, as this was a request by the attorney to change, so he can share with you why they suggested this change.
Thank you. Section 504 is an anti-discrimination statute, and it has its own requirements that a parent have the right to have an independent hearing procedure for certain types of disputes that come up under Section 504. In the past, those have been put through the school system's grievance procedure, but 504 guidelines state that there should be an independent hearing procedure, and so this is bringing this policy up to date with the law. There will actually, the actual procedures will be put in place in superintendent's regulations, once the board approves the policy, then it authorizes the superintendent to establish detailed procedures. But I thought the actual detailed procedures, of course, the board can see, but that would not be part of this policy, this is just a, a general policy. Basically brings the, the school system up to legal compliance. It's suggested by me.
Any further discussion? I'll take a motion to approve 1730-4022, 7231 on first reading.
So move?
Second.
So, Dr. Kirk and Mr. Harrison? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes 6-0. Next, we have policy 5010, Parent Organizations on First Reading.
Have we received any other comments or anything on that one?
No, sir. Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve this on first reading.
Second.
Mr. Harrison made the motion, Mr. Schumaker made the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes 6-0. And we'll move to policy 5030, Community Use of Facilities on First Reading. Any questions, discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may, the policy committee and staff have worked arduously on this, as well as legal and all board members' input. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I know we have worked hard on this, and I want to just commend everybody's efforts to get this policy where it is today, and it's a great job to you. Thank you.
And can you, well, notice that there is a definition of school clubs that was added to clarify, since that is somewhat of a general term that has been used? Mr. Shaw, you have a question?
I was just going to add that we submitted revisions today that followed up on last, the work session of two weeks ago, and one of those provisions was the definition of student clubs, as Ms. Furtinbaugh identified, and we just reached over to policy 3620, and it defines student clubs, so we incorporated that definition. And then the other change that was added today, I believe, was also discussed at the work session. If you could keep scrolling down, it's on the fee structure. There's an additional 10% discount provided for groups that provide services to a school's students without outside participants, and immediately after school, and lasting no more than 90 minutes. It's a way to mitigate the expense for those organizations. I believe that was a follow-up to last.
And in that item, is that supposed to be not outside student participants, in that blue area?
It's supposed to be no outside student participants, but we should have a break between student and participants, I see. Yeah. Yeah, that's my fault.
Mr. Powell?
I think we've already heard from at least one group that has emailed us to let us know that even with the change in fee structure, they are not going to be able to offer services to Cabarrus County students because of the burdensome fees that we would be charging them for use of a school building that is already occupied, heated, cooled, lighted, et cetera. I think that's disappointing, but I fear that there's going to be others. I don't think the 10% additional discount is enough. I think that should be at least 25%. And I kind of agree with Mr. Harrison's comment about charging $1 for these groups. I guess he still stands by that, possibly. But I would, I would agree with that, Mr. Harrison, the $1 proposal you made several months ago, but the groups remembered it, and I'm glad I remembered it as well. But 25%, I, I would be more comfortable with that number, or the, Mr. Harrison's $1.
One of my questions that I sent back this week was to ask, when would the fee schedule be revisited? And Ms. Klutz agreed that because the rates are set for the school year, July 1st to June 30th, that she would revisit prior to the start of the next school year. This type of use of facilities was not known at that time, because these, these particular after-school groups were working through PTOs or other means to use the school facilities. So she will now include that as one of the evaluation criteria, but to change it now would not be fair to the groups who did reserve the facilities and pay the stated rates to make any other exception. That's why we have that one policy recommendation that's in there right now, about give an additional 10% as one way to accommodate, so it would be going for, for this school year, and then thinking about how the rates can be adjusted going for the new school year, if there's, for example, just one classroom in use, so. So any further discussion? I'll take a motion to approve policy 5030. Mr. Harrison made the motion, Dr. Kirk made the second. Any further discussion?
This is just right now a first read, is that correct?
Correct, this is first reading.
So it's a first read? All right, so we just have another month for additional comments to this.
Oh, you know, whenever the community can comment, they can comment tonight, yeah.
That's, that's my point. It's just, if there are issues with this, and we can get some more feedback from the community.
Sure.
We have another month before it's actually.
And you're on the policy committee, right? So you were in that discussion to go through how difficult it is to separate who's using a facility for what purpose. So, okay, I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Poe, so, motion passes 5-1. Thank you. Next, we have item, agenda item 10.05, the Harrisburg Greenway easement.
By virtue of us not having a policy for that, does it now revert back to extending our wishes from, I think it was maybe October, where if we, or maybe September, where if we didn't have a policy in place that addresses it, the facility's use, that the extension would be granted through the rest of the year? Does that automatically take place?
I believe this, this policy will be on the agenda in December for final approval, and that would be something we would discuss at that time. So the new semester, the second part of the school year, does not start until January, so. Okay, so Mr. Louder?
Yes, ma'am. And I think as we discussed, first off, Mr. Daniel Stein is here with the Town of Harrisburg, should you have any questions that I could ask for you, but we discussed this, I guess, at length at our work session. This is the item where you would obviously allow them to have a greenway easement across both of our two school properties, Harris Hickey Ridge Middle and High School. They drafted an interlocal agreement, and I passed on to the attorneys, I think, last week. It's just pretty straightforward, saying that they go act as a project manager, and that we will allow them to do so, and they will build it and be open to the public.
Okay, now, do we have the interlocal agreement? I didn't see it out there when I reviewed.
I do not know if you do have the interlocal agreement. I know it was passed to the attorneys last Wednesday, and it may not.
Mr. Shaw, have you guys reviewed? We don't have the interlocal agreement to approve tonight.
I have not presented that, I don't think. Okay.
So we really need to see that before we... So I'm not sure who that went to, so we'll apologize to the Town of Harrisburg for misplacing the paperwork, perhaps. I will share, there were a couple of questions that I asked, and as far as maintaining the sidewalks at the crossing, where it would cross from the greenway over to the other side, where they would put a parking lot on the side, the Town of Harrisburg would take responsibility for that, and they will look at, Mr. Harrison, what you had brought up about speed bumps and adequate signage. They agree there would be adequate signage, and speed bumps would be considered.
As a matter of fact, the speed bumps would just be in extending, extending the existing speed bumps along that road.
Okay, just further down?
Right. I mean, but it would add to the safety, certainly that intersection.
And there's a number of other things. I can send my questions, and the answers out to you guys, because we, we can't approve it right now.
Madam Chair, should we just table this until a future day?
Yes, I think.
I'll make a motion that we table this.
To the work session, though. Let's agree to approve it at the work session.
Okay. A move that we table this until the December work session?
So, until December 3rd. So Mr. Schumaker made the motion to table it.
Yeah, but you're going to have two new board members on the 3rd, and they won't have time to review it either, because they can't start.
They'll, they'll receive the information for the meeting.
Can they have that ahead of time? If they're not sworn in?
Yeah, we don't, I, I don't even, I haven't even seen the agreement, so I think they could get it whenever everybody else gets it.
The agreement is one page, so it's not a...
Yes, it's just an interlocal agreement, but we need to have whatever in front of us to vote on.
So, Madam Chair, to clarify, we would be voting then on, on the work session for this, is that correct?
Yeah.
Part of the motion?
Or, before we, yeah, before we approve the tabling, we can table that, but could we, how would you all feel about voting that we do have the intent pending approval of the agreement tonight?
Let's give Harrisburg and the municipalities that we're partnering with as much guidance as we can, and as much commitment as we can. I think it's a very good idea.
So which way are you saying to approve intent tonight? And then formally approve the, the interlocal agreement? Oh, yeah, mine were just the questions I asked in the meeting.
Ms. Furtinbaugh, I, I really don't see the problem with, you know, we'll have our work session on the December 3rd, then we'll have our business meeting on the 10th. I don't really see why we should rush it. If, if we can get the information in, I don't think that they've got construction equipment or contract with anybody to do this, they just need the permission to begin this process to build this greenway. I don't, I don't see where the harm would be to, to wait to the business meeting, even though, because none of us has seen this interlocal agreement. I, I agree with Rob, it would be kind of hard-pressed to, to put on our new board members just to kind of force it.
Mr. Steins, would you mind coming forward?
We're not trying to be unreasonable, but we do need to go through this.
Our intent tonight was, and I sent that to you and to Melinda, so, the intent tonight is our council in December could possibly have, so we have a development fee in lieu of, and a development clause in our ordinance that anytime a new development takes place on a piece of property that's on alignment, that's identified in the greenway, master plan, that they construct that said greenway. plan, that they construct that said Greenway. So in December's council meeting, we have a pretty large development coming along the north side of the county's property, and I was just hoping to have some things lined up with at least a letter of intent or an intent of some purpose so that when we're at that meeting, we can at least say that we have that for that developer in order for them to make a decision. So that, we don't have construction equipment, obviously, on the ground right now, but we're just trying to get our planning items in place for that December council meeting, so...
Okay, and when is the council meeting?
The second Monday, so...
It's on the tenth.
The tenth, correct.
And what time are your meetings?
Six p.m. Yep.
Okay, because often, we play this with the county, when we have a meeting the same night, they approve first, we approve second, or vice versa.
Certainly.
So...
Well, I believe what we could do is look at it at the work session and talk to our board members to see where they are on it, and if they're all fine with it, they can always make a motion in that meeting to accept it. If they, if they want a little bit more time, then that would push it to the tenth. But I don't want to force them to say we're going to vote on the, on the third, because that, that's not fair to them, since they've just got elected and they're just coming under the, to the fold to try to absorb what's going on. But we can communicate, I think. Don't you?
Yeah, let's follow through with the motion on the table to table this until December third. On December third, we will see what the perspective of the board is, and if someone at that point wants to make a motion to, let's approve it tonight. If not, we will put it on early in our December tenth meeting. Sound fair?
Mr. Stein, will that give you what you need? Or is that...
In a roundabout way, I think we can at least be working in that direction. So like I said, anything that's of any kind of intent or consensus that we're at least got a green light to work within that easement would be beneficial to us. That's really the main goal right now.
And I think we, on the third, we can indicate that intent, even if we don't formally approve the interlocal agreement that night for some reason. We need something tweaked.
That'd be perfectly fine.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Mr. Schumaker made the motion to table this to December third. And who seconded? Dr. Kirk seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion to table passes five-one, and Mindy, we will add that to the December third meeting. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we are at the end of our meeting and ready to move into closed session. I'll take a motion that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven a three, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged in pursuant to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven a six, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee to review personnel recommendations.
So move.
Is that Mr. Harrison?
Second.
Okay, so Kirk made the motion. Mr. Harrison made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you and good evening, and happy Thanksgiving.